Almost gone, so we will officially call the meeting to order. This is the March, excuse me, the May 23rd, 2018 work session of the Town Board. Let the Ministers reflect that Mr. Moore is absent this evening. We have a number of members of staff, thank you for staff, and we have a distinguished audience. And with that, we will move on. We have the minutes of May 9th, 2018 before us. We'll entertain a motion of approval for those minutes. I move.
I'll second.
You move and seconded. Any discussion about the minutes? Comments otherwise? All right, the Minutes will stand and approve. We'll go back to, yes, a roll call vote for the minutes. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carried. Monthly reports, nothing new to report for them. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, and Mr. Filippone is joining us. Please come to the table. And I'll ask Mr. Valentine to add a few more comments for this finished matter.
Thank you. Mr. Filippone is the developer of the Crown Point subdivision along Plank Road and Schucraft Road. It is in the third or fourth phase of that development, and as part of it, he's installed some sidewalks. Previously had a sidewalk waiver, and I have the original sidewalk waiver letter from 2006 that came through, but he brought up or highlighted one small portion that stubs to a cul-de-sac that he was looking to get a waiver for and didn't think that was necessary to construct. I think he passed out an overall plan, kind of showing the overall layout of the subdivision. He's installed the sidewalks along Plank Road, which is part of the original consideration, as well as kind of the inside loop. He's got his piece here, kind of highlighted up on the map, up on the wall, showing the green is the piece along Plank Road. The green is kind of the internal loop, and on that basically two lot little stub into the cul-de-sac is the piece he was looking to get a waiver for. Stephen, I don't know if you have anything else to...
You know, I did a little background history on the letter that I dropped off to everybody here just before the meeting started.
For the record, and it's 2018?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, 2018, yes.
Just want, I just want to make sure that the record is correct, so...
Yes, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
So I highlighted a couple of points with regard to some reasons why we were looking to abandon this one small section of sidewalk. The section of sidewalk would serve barely two homes on the cul-de-sac. It's generally unlikely that someone in the cul-de-sac would walk across the street to get on that small piece of sidewalk, to then cross the street to get on the sidewalk that is part of the inside loop there. The cost benefit for that sidewalk, it's, you know, it's $3,000, maybe a little bit more, and it would serve very few people. It's really not a good idea cost-wise. And we've already completed, you know, a long plank road, 1,760 square feet of sidewalk, roughly, between what we did in Phase 1 and what Mark and I both highlighted in our respective maps for Phase 2B, which is a significant amount of sidewalks, almost a third of a mile on Plank Road. And we're going to be tidying that up as far as topsoiling and seating and all that good stuff now that I've got the contractor back and we've got some more than three sunny days in a row. And so we, you know, we thought it wouldn't detract in any way from the subdivision or the people that live there or the general public by eliminating that. We'd like to put that money into, you know, additional plantings on our berms and things like that to make the area along Plank Road a little bit better. We suffered a lot of storm damage on the trees that we were trying to save along Plank Road. They just keep going over like dominos every time we get these crazy windstorms, so, you know, we're hoping to better use funds towards that than towards a sidewalk that probably wouldn't get a tremendous amount of use.
This map is very helpful, so it appears that in the subdivision there is sidewalk, you know, continuous sidewalk all the way through for pedestrians, and then on one side leading into the cul-de-sac sidewalks. So essentially, it's, you know, it's a complete loop, and you're just looking to eliminate that small piece on the other side where there is sidewalk directly across from it.
Correct. It's really, I think, the only non-continuous part of sidewalk within the development.
Well, wait a minute. Paul, there's...
This is not a sidewalk. This is...
Okay.
He previously had a sidewalk waiver from this board in 2006 that basically said he had to do sidewalks along Plank Road as well as one side internally. So he's been on the inside loop of the one side internally.
Oh, yeah, I see where you're going.
Kind of see on the map there. So this is kind of an offshoot of that section, I'd say 3B.
Yeah, we kind of took...
Just starting development or we're starting...
Cut up the sections because the engineer at the time made these sections really big and, you know, we didn't want to do 30 lot sections at a time in the midst of a recession, just sitting on developed lots wasn't a good idea.
Right, so it ends at 2:13? Is that what it is? It ends, and you just don't have the cul-de-sac?
It ends at 2:18, yes.
Two...
Well, 2:20 the sidewalk would end.
2:20, yes. It ends at 2:20, and then across the street is like 2:19 and 2:18. If you don't mind helping out, we'll larger map down here if you have a look at that.
Thank you.
By the way, the cul-de-sac doesn't have sidewalks.
I forgot my glasses somewhere. That's okay. So that's why I highlighted the yellow, which is sidewalk. This is actually going in, actually, I don't know if you saw, but we boxed out this. They're going to be pouring that. We did the main section along Plank Road last fall.
Right, we finished that Schucraft.
So I'm not in favor of a waiver. You know, I think for just continuity, having the sidewalk on all streets internally makes sense. Also, I don't necessarily just buy the only usage would be from those two homes. I mean, anyone who is out in the neighborhood walking that night may walk right across the street, down to the cul-de-sac and back around. I mean, I'm just thinking about my family, and that's probably what we would do. So, you know, I'm not in favor of granting a waiver, just because as I'm looking at this, not a week goes by where I'm running into somebody who asks, "Why are there sidewalks on this street? Not sidewalks on this street or in this neighborhood and not at the rest of this neighborhood." And so I, I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense. I mean, we've been, over the last year, I think, been getting a lot of different waiver requests from application or from developers on your sidewalks or some other part of a development that's already been approved either by us or by a previous board, and it's starting to frustrate me, honestly, that there's all these different people coming back after the fact saying, "Well, now I own it," or "Now I would like to not have the sidewalk," or whatever it may be. So, you know, I think granting a waiver on both sides makes sense, so I would be in favor. I'm not in favor of the waiver, and I think, you know, sidewalk down to the end for no other reason than uniformity within the subdivision makes sense to me, so...
What was the first waiver that we already granted?
First waiver was sidewalks on one side internally for Sections 1, 2, and 3. So this is Section 2. 3 is pending construction right now, kind of the lower part of that loop. Section 1 is already in. Sidewalks for it to be installed on the south side of Plank Road for all property frontage in the project. No sidewalks on, he's got one corner lot on Schucraft. And then there was a waiver granted for the future Section 4, which is Garden Hill, and I don't know if it shows that's kind of the stub at the end of Christine Circle in Garden Hill.
And there's no sidewalks in that neighborhood right now?
There is not.
And that makes sense.
That was the thought was not to...
It's a good use of the waiver, I believe.
Add them into the back of the subdivision when there's nothing in the front, so... So this was just the one piece that...
Do you have any recommendations from PRC on this?
See, PRC was kind of indifferent to it, you know, one way or the other, you know, there was pluses and minuses on both ends. You know, Steve approached me about it, and I said, you know, obviously there was already a waiver granted by this board, so therefore all waivers need to come back. So that's why we just wanted to bring him in as a guest to discuss it, have him share his thoughts on it.
I'm okay with it. I don't know. It's, I don't see that it's that essential to have a sidewalk considering the rest of it. Yeah, I could go for it. It's a big deal.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion for the waiver?
I will quickly grant the applicant request, Plank Road Development, for a waiver set forth in the May 23rd, 2018 letter. A second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion that we haven't already had, staff?
Just want to clarify, depending on which way it goes, typically a waiver includes a $500 fee for those two lots, just what the board's...
To go for something else.
What the board's thoughts are on if the waiver is granted, if that's under consideration or not.
Yeah, I was assuming that that was...
I just wanted to clarify that part of it, so it would be two lots, so it'd be...
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to include...
It's one and a half.
At the condition of a $500 fee.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mark. Staff, any other comments or input that isn't part of the record right now, but we should be part of the record? Right, board, any additional comments? Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so Carrie's 3-1. Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too, thanks. We'll move on to our action items, and our first action is review of the bids of the DPW pole barn that came in last week. And Mr. Tate, he's got the package of materials for us. All right. Okay, Mr. Tate.
Thank you. As we met a few weeks ago, we, you know, discussed that we were going to go out for bid for the pole barn, and we got the grant money through Senator Funky's office. We did have that bid opening this past Friday, and the bids came in. As you can see on here, C-Cor Building Solutions was the lowest bidder. We did have a pre-bid meeting on site so that any interested bidders and contractors could see kind of where exactly we were thinking for the building. They could see what's around, how they'd be able to access the site, you know, what they had for utilities, given that we had a stakeout called in when we knocked the old barn down. They were present for that and even had a few kind of follow-up phone calls with us. So they should be fully aware of kind of everything that was going into it, you know, and have a good understanding of what our intent was. So I felt comfortable with their number and given their kind of understanding of the bid specs.
So if the board were to move forward with this, and we would look to do a resolution at our next meeting, which would be legislative session, would be June 6th, what is the timing? Give the board an idea of what the timing might look like for the project?
For how soon they can start construction?
Start and finish.
So we talked to them, and while they don't know the exact start date, they do know that, you know, as part of the bid specs, we want them to at least start ordering the materials within 14 days of awarding the contract to them. They're going to kind of get right on that and hopefully start within a month, give or take, with the intent that it's completed by September.
Or before.
Or before, with the intent that we'll be able to use it, you know, if the weather kind of turns sooner or later and even going into the fall.
Can you remind me again the amount of the grant that was secured by Senator Funky?
The grant that we got through Senator Funky was for $129,000.
So we do have, we do have monies that as part of our building and facilities budget line that we have set aside that, you know, can go into maintenance or other aspects of construction, so we would look to do difference from that, from that line item. The only item that we have taken from that for this year has been the roof at Penfield Community Center, which we completed last, last week.
So with the grant, then the remaining funds, which aren't that much, are already budgeted for, the 2018 budget?
We have money in the 2018 budget for it, correct.
Which we kind of anticipated the number being slightly higher when we originally put in for the grant. It didn't include things as a concrete slab or some of the kind of exterior, you know, blockwork to make it a little nicer and more tractable, the building, given that it's going to be out front, yeah.
And consistent with the sewer operations facility.
So is it your recommendation that we go with the lowest bid?
Yes.
From C-Cor?
Yep.
So out of the three that bid, what two came to actually view the site and...
Finger Lakes and C-Cor Building Solutions were the two contractors that showed up.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we accept the bid, the lowest bid for the project from C-Cor Building Solutions, and that a resolution be drafted for us.
For September, for June 6th?
Yeah.
You got September stuck in my head.
Don't wish to submerge, keep it away.
You need that one.
I'll second that.
Right. Moved and seconded. Any additional questions or comment from the board?
Let's break the case down on that.
Anything, Eric, additionally, that you feel should be part of the record? Great. The move and seconded, those in favor, aye. Opposed, four and all, that carries. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. We'll next, we'll next move on to 78 Whitespire Lane, hold harmless agreement request. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. A resident at 78 Whitespire come in and is looking to install a fence on his yard. Whitespire is kind of the lower section of Cranberry Cove Development off of 250. His house backs up to a storm sewer easement we have running along the backyard. So if you look at the map, it has a catch basin on the north, a catch basin on the south. There is a pipe running through there, so he's looking for a fence over the top of our pipe. I spoke with him about it, explained if he does get a hold harmless agreement, you know, we've obviously got the rights to come in there, maintain the pipe as needed. We also asked people in those areas to hand dig around the pipe just to make sure they're not impacting it in that area. He said he understood. You know, he has kids and just looking to, you know, fence the yard for children. I think in the little corner, he sketched in the possible location for a future shed. I'm not supportive of having a physical structure because there is kind of an odd little corner there. He didn't ask for that, but figured if it's before the board asks the question, and then we can, you know, pass that along. But I think he was anticipating a shed back there, and I don't think staff's supportive of having a physical structure in our easement, but a fence, obviously, we can work around, and if you've got to remove a section of it, typically that's easy enough.
Yeah, I would suggest that if the board, rest of the board agrees, that you pass along to the resident just the reasons why that would not be a good placement for the shed, and also certainly to talk to their neighbors about the fence going in so we don't have any problems.
Yep, yeah, and the neighbor on one side has a fence already. You can show it, see it's slightly off the property line, so his neighbor to the east is, has a fence on their property. So, say, consistent with the neighborhood, but there are some fences out there already.
Okay, all right. This is consistent with what we have done with the standard wording about, you know, their responsibility if we go in, take it down, or we'll take it down, but we don't put it back up 100% responsibly for that, and obviously not block any, you know, drainage or anything like that.
Yep, I think this way it shows angle, because again, we wouldn't want it over top of the catch basin, that little corner, he's kind of cheating it in, so it's not physically over top of the grate, so we can pull the grate off and, you know, not stuck down, you know, if we ever had to get in to remove a blockage.
Okay, all right. We're comfortable with that? Entertain a motion of approval for the whole harmless agreement?
I'll move that we grant the whole harmless agreement.
Okay, the move, seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Further discussion, board, anything additional that was not part of the record should be added? Okay, I've moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, four and all. Move to item C, 2150 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. This is a conditional use permit. The restaurant, Mr. Cheng came in regarding that restaurant. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Cheng did come in that evening of the 16th, and his comment was he was opening up a Cambodian type restaurant, similar to the Soup Spoon. He's got between 15 and 20 people proceeding with takeout service. He has three to five employees at any time of the site, and his hours of operation are generally from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. He does own the property, he's responsible for dumpster locations and the maintenance and all that business. So other than that, and signage. The signage will be consistent with what's already there.
He's not having a drive-through, so...
No drive-through.
It all sounded good, clear.
And we had his son in here before.
Thank you.
That's right.
Work session, trying to kind of pave the groundwork before his dad came in for the hearing, so we certainly were fully informed even before the hearing, I think. Sounds like a good venture.
I'll move that we support this restaurant, conditional use permit for the restaurant at 2150 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, with all conditions, the usual, that you would expect, no drive-through.
Yeah, I think specifically having the no, I mean, even though it's in the center, still, I think...
That's right.
Because if, if something were to happen and he were look to move, take one of the end spots like...
Which you could do.
Which you could do with like an AT&amp;T type of thing. So I think, you know, the approval for this is for no drive-through, and that if anything changed, certainly he'd have to come back and report. And then, as Linda said, the normal, you know, conditions for that particular district and signage and things.
Did he say he was going to consolidate existing dumpsters?
Right now, there's only one dumpster area for the site.
So he can continue...
Yeah, they're all using the same dumpsters.
I know, at least implied that.
Yeah. There's really not much...
He did anything else to one unit.
I was only paying for one.
Right. Can't blame you for that.
Okay. Okay. I second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Anything additional that...
We'll prepare a resolution for you to review prior to the 6th.
For the 6th, okay, very good. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, four and all. That'll bring us to item D, 2106 Five Mile Line Road, itinerant vendor's license. Mr. Costello.
Yeah, it's one of the first ones we've done with the Town Board. Allen Laurie Broccolo had their public hearing as well on the 16th, requesting the ability to have a mobile cart to sell flowers and produce, generally speaking, setting it up from Friday afternoon and taking it down on Saturday throughout the summer months, generally from May 11th. And they've already received a temporary permit to allow that to happen, so they were in compliance, which I applaud them for doing, and then going until about September 29th and then shutting the thing down. We did talk about the fact that they had actually started in the parking lot because it was too wet to have it out in the front. Still a little nervous about putting it out in the grass area, but if they want to try it and see how it goes, I'm sure Terry and Lindsay would probably be more concerned about losing their front yard if something happens there. It would probably put him back, but I guess I'd like to put some wording in there that in the event that there are some issues associated with, you know, lawn maintenance or just something that might cause a problem for that to be there and not...
Driveway.
Yeah, yeah. Put it in the driveway and make it, you know, make it viable there if that's the case. But we'll let them try and see how it goes, and if it doesn't work, I'm sure I will hear from Terry and Lindsay about it, so...
And like the restaurant we just discussed, Mr. Broccolo had come in for a work session to explain what they were looking to do, and then we had the hearing.
Okay, all right. Anything else that we should be aware of that we didn't hear either at work session or at the public hearing?
The only thing is, they didn't really spend a lot of time talking about possible signage for the event, and I think I want to talk to them about it in a little more detail. I know they have an A-frame sign they want to put out there, which is fine.
Which is fine.
So can we have the license include the signage per code, basically?
Yes, absolutely right, yeah.
I would move that we grant the itinerant vendor's license at 2106 Five Mile Line Road for the plant in, I think called Farmer's Market, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, because I think that's what they said, plants by spring, and then as the season goes...
And the hours and the dates are...
Uh, yes, the hours are...
Are covered in the resolution or something, or in the license?
Uh, yes, I'll incorporate them. I've got to go back and just verify for them, when exactly they're going to close it down.
So they're going to, they're going to set up Friday at 2:00 p.m. They're going to take it down Saturday at 2:00 p.m.
Okay.
They'll run from May 11th to September 29th is what they're showing on this, on the application.
Okay. I think I'll try to further embellish when they're going to open up in the morning, that kind of thing.
I think, I think that would be good. It almost appears as though they're kind of running consistent with the business hours because I think Williams shuts business down in the afternoon. They're not open all Saturday. I think they're open until 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. I'll verify that for the resolution.
Great, there's been a motion on the table. There's a second. Any additional discussion? Nothing additional for the, for the record, Mr. Costello on this?
Well, that's it.
Okay. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, Carrie, four and all. Brings us to E, sidewalk policy update, and won't steal any of Mr. Valentine's thunder. This is something that he has been working on, and this is at least the second or third draft that I've had an opportunity to see. So with that, Mr. Valentine, please lead us, lead us through.
Thank you. This is obviously something that we've been talking about for a while, is an update to this. If you can see on the main page, this originally started back in '79, and we've had different amendments along the way. Our last update was in 2000. So first and foremost, we kind of wanted to update, you know, what is the intent of the sidewalk policy? As we've seen, a lot of stuff, call it West Penfield, East Penfield, so part of the discussion is about the map. We'll get into it in a minute. And just first, working through the policy was, this board sees a lot of waiver requests for East Penfield, and those are pretty generally approved as we go along. So just updating the intent is to kind of keep sidewalks on West Penfield at this point. Not saying this policy can't be updated as, obviously as Penfield grows, but keep sidewalks on West Penfield. East Penfield at this point, there's really nothing else that we're tying into. So the first part of it was just kind of clarifying what the purpose of the policy is, and then as we look at primary sidewalks, I ticked off the ones that were in that East Penfield area, that really those are not the intent of one, our sidewalk construction, nor Highland list of, you know, developers list for that. The second item is an update to the cost. Obviously, we've updated fees, we've updated other things as we go along. It's been 18 years since the last update. We've had that $500 waiver fee since 2000, so it's carried forward. It really hasn't kept pace with current construction costs and the cost of materials. So updating the standard waiver fee, so in East Penfield, the standard waiver fee would go from, at least we're proposing, go from $500 to $1,000 per lot. And then we can look at the map. And then in West Penfield, we're looking at using kind of a spreadsheet to balance out, and that's kind of, I just printed out a sample one, and that was kind of the original intent as we get into the sidewalk policy, as Jim can maybe chime in on, was not to overly burden one developer to another, was to kind of balance out the cost. You know, a developer that has a corner lot, that's got two major road frontages plus internal, you know, has quite a bit of cost incurred versus somebody that may have 60 feet of frontage and then go internal, you really don't have a lot of cost. So we tried to look at creating a standard spreadsheet that, you know, looks at, and this one just happens to be water some that's in front of you. I have another example if you'd like to look at it. The number of lots, the number of feet of exterior, so basically the road, public road frontage, the internal sidewalks, identifying whether it's residential, commercial, and then to keep it current, we're looking to tie it to the county bid price. The county every year comes out with their standard bids for roads, curbs, gutters, all that. Tie it to that price, so it kind of moves as it goes along, so, you know, we don't have to revisit it every year. It calculates what the total compliance cost is. So if they did everything for this one, it's $152,000. It doesn't mean that they get a waiver or whatever. If the board says, you know, put it in, they don't get a waiver. If the board says, you know, put it in, they don't get a waiver, that would be their cost to put it in. We basically targeted 50% of the construction cost as the waiver fee. So, obviously, it's more than the $500, but then that money could go into another sidewalk somewhere else. I just have a few checks in here, just, you know, took $5,000 is kind of, is that a reasonable cost per lot? Is not to exceed that. And that's kind of our check just to make sure we're not overburdening one developer than another. So, we kind of put $5,000 as our maximum per lot for residential, $10,000 for commercial. The next one goes down to, is it in East Penfield, you know, which would automatically come up with $1,000 per lot? And then basically summarizes what their cost would be. And then I just did another check at the end, what the per lot is. So, they're $3,600. Going through a lot of them we've had recently and I sent the spreadsheet out. It's been averaging $2,000 to $3,000-ish dollars for most of the subdivisions we've had recently. So, to me, that's just kind of another check that, you know, trying to keep everything fair across the board, we're not overburdening one developer than another, you know, but if they do get a waiver, you know, they're paying their appropriate share and then that money would go back into the overall sidewalk budget for either repairs, new sidewalk construction.
So, when they go look at this, are they going to immediately say, can I do it on one side of the, or you have it on both?
I mean, this is, obviously, they still got to come to the board here and request the waiver. I mean, we can, with the spreadsheet and everything else, if they ask for a waiver, they would still have to may pay some fee towards it, but it would be more than the $500.
Are you responsible for anything that happens in the Pettigill versus the East Penfield?
At our current costs, 100-foot wide lot would run you $3,600. So, we're at $3,675 a lineal foot, we're almost $4,000 and they're paying $500 for a waiver. So, just trying to, you know, make that more of an equitable cost. So, that's kind of the first intent here and I don't know if the board's got questions on that, but then the second is kind of the spreadsheet and then the map piece. I know I've thrown a lot out there, was the proposal is kind of that East Penfield piece and we showed it east of 250 and outside what has been mixed use outside of what is more the urbanized area, was if the board is comfortable, we would have that as more of an administrative waiver process that would go through PRC if there is development out there. If PRC was, didn't think it was necessary for a sidewalk in that area, PRC could grant that waiver. If there was a question at all, you know, we'd kick it back to this board, but that may limit or minimize some of those ones. They come in frequently. You know, in my memory, I can't remember this board looking to put sidewalks out there. Obviously, we don't have any, we show everything with the sidewalks that are in.
We would still ask for the easements, though.
Oh, we always take the easement.
At some point.
We take the waiver, we take the waiver fee, take it, but, you know, that just may lessen.
I think it would just be 441 just because you get the short fields there. It's kind of precarious anyway to try to walk on Penfield Road when you get out.
And as we get development, if it's along 441, you know, obviously, that would be something, if we saw a large development, go out that way, you know, that's something, you know, PRC could.
But if you're talking about park, you want to have sidewalks go to the park, you want sidewalks to go to the schools. You have that park out there, but it's not really safe to walk down Penfield Road to get to it.
I mean, at this point, we really don't have anything east of Dublin Road, so until we see some additional development, it's kind of hard to get to that, but... So, those were kind of my three or PRC's three proposals was first, the amendments to the policy as highlighted, second, you know, adoption of the worksheet or the, you know, the updated cost, and then third, you know, is the board comfortable with that? You know, PRC's administrative waiver of that East Penfield area, you know, that may minimize some of the, it depends on this board or some of those waivers come to this board every month, so.
Unless you like those waivers.
No, no. The only thing is up there, Penfield Road is my only, you know, what was that thing? The other day, I was talking to somebody about it, when he had Ashland Rise and we were going to have going through that area, a sidewalk that would take you over to Penfield Road.
We looked at that and that kind of followed the sewer line and then the sewer line, actually, they got more units in Fairport that relocated and the sewer line went the other way, so the sewer wasn't coming through, so that kind of.
Well, it came back to this board.
Fell off.
The shore board re-reviewed that and basically said that, you know, because the sewer had gone another way, they got the additional units that we did not.
Without having any other infrastructure in that area to run a, you know, basically, you'd have to have an elevated walkway through.
Yeah, it just makes me think that is something that, not a sidewalk per se, it was like a trail, but it was something that was in East Penfield that.
Yep, and so that was right here.
Right.
So, we still, we went around that with this line, so it shows Dublin Road here, shows that developed areas. We tried to show everything kind of east of that, so that would still come to that, back to this board as it stands now and try to write the policy so if something came out here, there was a larger redevelopment, PRC, you know, could default back to this board and, you know.
I think that's unfair. Then we won't have to look at the sidewalk waivers and what.
All right, just out of curiosity, are the lots along the line, are they actually defined just in case someone comes in and says, I live at X and it happens to be like that one as opposed to that one? I'm just curious if.
Not everyone, but a lot of them, surprisingly, along that kind of north-south line going north through Sweet's Corners.
Right.
The property lines kind of do fall in that line. So, it did kind of run along a lot of property lines and that's kind of how we picked it. It was, and I don't know why or, you know, Volps and Gorm that fell under, but as you look at it, this line through here kind of fell under a lot of property lines. This was a property, obviously, we're splitting this one, this one fell on a property line. So, it kind of, as you can see, some of the other ones here, there is kind of some natural or existing north-south lines. It falls on a line, obviously, you know, PRC can always defer back to this board as basically default.
Do we, I mean, would you define it as, you know, like latitude and longitude? I mean, is there any way that you define it or is it just this is the map and?
I mean, we can put a dimension, it's 500 feet or 1,000 feet off of 250. I mean, we can put some rough area to it, but when in doubt, we'd defer, default back to this board is, if it came up as a question.
I can appreciate that. I'm just trying to provide something, if there was a way to provide something within the policy that is pretty defined, whereas, you know, if your property line is no earlier, no closer than 1,000 feet off 250 or if you are the east side of Dublin Road, you know, just something to kind of just.
Yeah, okay. Because theoretically, you could still have a lot of waiver requests coming in for that section of town.
Yep, no question.
Yeah, and I mean, this by no means is going to eliminate sidewalk waiver requests. You know, there is still a lot of area you can see in kind of the northeast corner of that that's still undeveloped. There is no sidewalks currently, but we kind of just tried to, I would say, take an easy approach of the easy line of there and east. We have no sidewalks within miles of that, you know, those seem pretty standard for that and then anything, you know, west that come back to this board, obviously, we can see how this goes and, you know, amend the policy again of 250 becomes the dividing line, anything east of 250, you know, there's more of an admin waiver, you know, anything west of that.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, you've put a lot of work into this because this is something that we've been discussing for over a year now, if not more, as far as starting to conceptualize something that would make a little bit less administrative burden on everyone's part, so I can certainly appreciate that. Yeah, and I, you know, I agree with Linda that, you know, 15 years down the road and 10, 15 years as, you know, if East Penfield does start to develop, how the state is going to start to look at, you know, 441 or they're going to start to look at Atlantic, I mean, we can't predict because, you know, you never know what's going to happen just on the east side of Penfield, you know, the county line. So, I would say that, you know, the delineation we have is probably good for, you know, today, probably can guide us through the next comprehensive plan, you know, as a good working document and, you know, moving forward. I would like, though, I know this is under an action item, but I would like to at least have an opportunity to kind of read this through more than just tonight, so.
Of course, yeah. I just wanted the opportunity to go through with the board as.
Oh, okay.
Walk you through it if you wanted to see other examples. I sent you the spreadsheet. I have other examples of kind of the breakdowns. And if you want to look at that, if you want to go through the policy, you know, but just wanted to, you know, get it out there, have some discussion on it. Obviously, you know, happy to come back at the next work session and have further discussion if you get one instead of talking about them.
We could put this for tonight. We can hold the matter, table the matter for tonight and then bring it back at our next meeting, which will be the 13th of June. We can have that back as an action. And then between now and then, if the board has any questions, wants to see some additional examples as Mark has put together or anything like that, you know, please, please let Mark know and he can get that pushed out.
Yep.
So, all right, so.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. Any further discussion or any further items that you might need for Mark at this point?
No.
Okay, so, those in favor, aye. Opposed, okay, so four and all, it is tabled. That brings us to the end of our agenda items for action, guest action and information and no, being no further business to come before the board. The May 23, 2018 meeting will stand adjourned at 7:41 p.m. Thank you, staff. Thank you, PCTV. Thank you, board.